I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's 6:00 PM. A roll call. Mayor Martin is absent and excused. At this time, we would like to invite Brody Anderson. He's a Weeblo scout who will be leading us in the Aplastic Allegiance.
My Aplastic Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we will now open it up for public input. Any public input during this time?
Well, you probably won't want to hear what I have to say.
Now's the time.
This working? My name is Wilfred Martin. And I'm still at a quandary here on, on, uh, why you threw $25,000 in about three seconds down the rat hole to do a study on a building that's only going to benefit the people that are designing the building? Is there anybody that can answer that? You voted for it.
I'm gonna take that. So the $25,000, the council, as you've authorized, was to provide some additional investigation into the feasibility and the need aspect of a new public safety building. And you did direct us to organize a citizens committee to help out in the investigation element of that. And I met with the architect last week. And I actually asked them to give us a breakdown of the scope of the work and all the things that they're going to be doing for us. And that we won't be paying them a cent until we get it in writing and we have a contract in place that outlines what the council's directed us to do. In fact, they already sent me a bill and I said, "We're not going to pay this until we have everything outlined the way we need to."
Good, good. Yeah, the reason I'm bringing it up is you are going to form a committee to do a study on that project, aren't you? And you're going to have people at large on that committee. So there's no need to spend $25,000 when the people at large can do the same study. Am I correct?
The study is, the committee is to be involved in the process and making decisions. The study is to have options and a design and feasibility.
Well, we can come up with options awful quick. But I'm wondering why it even, I'm wondering why it even come up. That's, that's another thing, you know? And, and, uh, when the, I wish the fire chief was here tonight because I, you know, this, this is all coming to light now. And he made a statement here the other night that sort of bothered me. He said, "I hired, I already hired five more people." Is that true? He made that statement here the other night when he was here. Now, if you didn't hear it, my hearing must be off or something. And that could be true because I asked you to turn up the mics. And I guess they don't work in this chamber.
He hired five people four or five years ago? Is that what you're talking about?
No, he said he hired five, he hired five people. So maybe he did it four or five years ago, but he didn't say that.
He's not here, I can't.
Yeah.
There's three people that they hired five years ago.
Three people or five?
Three people. One per shift.
Well, he said five, so. Now, we'd like to, you know, in this, uh, study that you're going to do and get these people involved, people at large, I would like to be able to be on that committee if I could.
I believe I've seen your name submitted to be on the committee.
Huh?
So your name has been submitted.
Is that right?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yeah, that came through.
Good, because I'd like to go up and look at the present fire station. And there's something else on the horizon, too. We got to talk a little more about the ambulance and fire department and how that really operates. And see if we can't get, uh, the mix of those two programs set up in a way that it eliminates overtime. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else? Public input? Okay. If there's no one else for a public input, we'll move on to declaration of potential conflicts of interest. Is there any conflicts of interest with the council for the consent agenda? Do we have a motion?
So you're on number five now?
Do we just keep going if there's some conflict? Okay. All right, so we will move to, um, number six. And that is bid openings, awards, and appointments.
You're going to have a motion for number five.
All right, can I get a motion for number five? Do you want me to go through them? Could be our minutes for council meetings in December, January 2nd, January 8th, January 31st, December 2017 financials, January 2018 financials, liquor license and special amusement permit renewal for KBS Entertainment, Inc., DVA Caribou Inn and Convention Center located at 19 Main Street, issuance of quick claim deed for tax-acquired property at 56 Lower Linden Street, MAP 27 Lot 48, and issuance of quick claim deed for tax-acquired property at 232 Lombard Road, MAP 10 Lot 15A.
So moved.
Second.
I'm for 96. I don't know all this stuff, so.
I'm sorry, you're for which one?
96. And then 34 West Prescott Road.
That's not, that's later. That was, that was 56.
Yep, we'll get down there in a little bit. Okay, so, so moved. Did we get a second?
Second, yeah.
Uh, which is of the council? All in favor? Okay, thank you. All right. We have, um, bid openings, awards, and appointments. We have the Caribou Housing Agency appointment for the board members for this year. We have, um, Mary Kate Barbosa will be serving a one-year term, James Belanger Jr., two-year term, and Jay Combe, five-year term. Um, these are, this has been the proposal. Council's wishes?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor? Thank you. All right. We have a formal public hearing. It's a liquor license and special amusement permit for Moscato's Restaurant at 6 Center Street. Discussion?
This is, this is the restaurant that closed down for a little while and is under new ownership and they're dressing it up. In fact, they've advertised for applicants to join them. And they, they'd like to have a liquor license as part of their business. Just need to open the public hearing then.
I'll open the public hearing at 6:08. Any feedback from the public? All right, we'll close the public hearing at 6:09.
Action on that?
Action.
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor? All right. Yes, thank you. Okay. Now, we're going to be talking about the discussion and possible action regarding tax-acquired properties for sale. I believe this is now when y'all would like to speak. So if you'd like to come up to the microphone and introduce yourself? Thank you.
Hey, my dad had a government password.
I'm sorry, can you introduce yourself?
Danielle Bottin.
Okay.
Talking for my dad. He has a government password and paying on taxes, it didn't go through. But I can bring the money up and I didn't know how much, like, how long I have to get it in.
What is the address of the property?
96 Main Street and 34 West Prescott Road.
For Lee Land Frost?
Yep. Because I was told I couldn't pay the full amount. When I talked to Carl, so, I don't know.
You're looking to pay off the entire tax balance?
The $4,000, yeah. For both properties. It's $4,700 and something.
Those two parcels together. We have a statement today from the finance department. This was just handed to us earlier today showing that the current outstanding balance for those two parcels is $14,805.11.
My dad's willing to pay it. Just need to know how much time and grab it out of the bank. Because I'm not with a car, but I can take a taxi.
So it's $14,800?
Yeah, we can do it. My dad has the money. Says he has a government password from DHS, uh, from DFAST. So he can only take out so much. Because where they were hacking in accounts.
Talking about both those properties.
Both of those properties together.
Yeah.
How long do you think he'll leave? A week?
Maybe a week. Because they only let us take out $1,500.
She needs more than a week.
So $1,500 a day.
So maybe three, six, nine, 12. No, she didn't do a week. Let's, let's see.
14 days.
Yeah, two weeks.
I say two weeks.
If they don't do it, do they allow it on weekends?
Uh, on Saturdays they do. Yep, till noon time.
I make a motion we give her two weeks from today.
Second.
Where do I pay those?
Just come into the front office and visit with, with Jane.
Okay. I know her really good. Visit her all the time.
I'd like to have a clarification if I can, sir. We're going to be voting on whether or not to send these properties out to bid tonight?
Yes.
And if we do that, it doesn't happen immediately. A person can still come in and pay up their taxes, correct?
That's for the council to decide how you want to handle it.
Yeah, all that's what I.
From, from the administrative staff side, the policy is that they have up until the 31st of January to pay their taxes. If they don't have it paid by that point, then we bring it to you to say, "We've tax-acquired these and we can put them out to bid." If you want to give somebody the leeway, like you've just done, getting two weeks to pay it up, then, then you can do that, but the staff cannot.
Okay, thank you.
So will she need to see you tomorrow to, um, no, okay, so. So we've agreed for the two weeks to have the taxes paid in full?
Okay, I'll make sure of it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Bragdon, 253 Belanger Road. I owe, it's a little less than $2,300.
$2,105.50.
It's actually less than I thought, but almost a couple hundred. Won't complain. Um, I was wondering if I could have until the 5th of March at the very latest?
For the council, just so you're aware, the, the interest on these things continue to accrue. And so the amount as of today for this particular property is $2,370.43.
That's what I thought, yes, that's what I thought.
And so if even the, you know, even the two-week delay that you've given, that will continue to accrue interest and all of that needs to be paid up.
Do you have a figure of how much it will be until the 5th of March?
Three weeks later.
Just, will it be another $100 always?
I can, I can, if they come in tomorrow, we can calculate it out. Or either we can downstairs or finance can upstairs.
So you can do it by the 5th?
Yeah, at the latest.
I make a motion we give until the 5th.
5th of March?
The 5th of March, yes.
All in favor? Abstained, I mean, opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further discussion on the tax-acquired properties?
If I might to bring up a point of discussion with the council. So you'll notice that on the list, we already have two parcels that the city's already tax-acquired. And these are parcels that are from previous years that just haven't sold. And the, in order to sell them, we've talked with Carl Grant, who's been monitoring these. And we've dropped the minimum bid amount just a little bit to hopefully get those to sell. There's also other properties that, if I might, I'll just highlight these on the map. Strategically, the city might consider retaining them. And the ones that I'm more particularly interested in are those that would be on Limestone Street. As we begin looking at the future of that area and, and some of the riverfront development that we've contemplated, it's sometimes easier to package properties when you've got single ownership or at least a very willing seller. And those four properties that we have there, we may want to consider retaining those, not putting those out to bid and, and beginning to, to package some of those together towards that development in the area. I have to also say, we don't have anybody on the hook right now to start doing that. And so it's, it's a matter of, do we want to, to hedge that and, and be a little more aggressive in the riverfront development? Or do we simply put it back on the books? And we'll have to see what happens.
Maybe if we put them back on the books, somebody else would want them to hedge for later on, too. Try it, see what happens.
How, how long does the city have them?
Uh, those, those four, we've had one of those for a couple of years now. The 103, MAP 38 Lot 106. But the other ones, they're, they're brand new this year through the process. So to get on this list, just again, another clarification, somebody will have had to not pay their property taxes for three years. That's what gets it on the list, okay? It's not just a single year it's been missed.
I'm guessing the ones that have, that have already gone out to bid and been passed on, they're not likely to bid on in the future.
Depends on how low the minimum bid price is, right? Maybe the Caribou Utilities District would want a couple of those to expand their operations down there, I don't know.
I don't think so.
There's one of them on here that I think you've got an easement for.
I'm sure there's.
Number one. I think you've got a railway or an easement or something on that one. I think we discussed that when we took that property. It's down under the bridge.
11 Lower Washington?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Council put that in last year, right?
Well, there was a house there. And then they tore it, I guess tore it down or whatever.
So one of council's wishes for the remaining properties on the list.
Put them up to bid.
Put them up to bid. Got a motion?
Is that a motion?
Yeah, a motion, excuse me.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. All right. The next thing on the agenda is approving the return check policy that was provided to us last meeting. And any discussion from the council? Do I have a motion? And all in favor? And then next, we also have the, um, city policy for disposal of surplus equipment and resources. Anything back from council?
I asked the question last time, we discussed it. And as far as establishing the value, that's still clear as much. It's still, it's too much, you know, we just narrowed it down. I mean, vehicles is no problem, land is not a problem, but some of the other stuff, you know, where are you going to, where are you going to source the information for 600 feet of rope, as an example?
Yeah, something, especially a used 600 feet of rope. You know, there's, some things are, are going to be very difficult. And it may just have to be, we'll have to do some online searching for what new product would be of similar size and an appropriate, you know, reasonable discount as far as the value goes, knowing.
Check the columns, see how much they sell it for or something like that.
Right. Uh, you know, you bring up a good point and that, I guess just to raise another issue that I probably need to include something in here relative to firearms from the police department. Do we want to treat those in a little bit more special category? In that officers that have used a firearm for a long time, even though it's surplus, they know that firearm, they know that instrument. And it may be appropriate, at least with things coming out of the police department, the public safety realm, to let the official who was utilizing that be the first person to bid on it regardless. And if they want it, determine a value and let them buy it outright before any of that goes out. Uh, that's probably a, again, a one that we could put into, into this policy if the council's okay with that.
Can you just clarify number, number two? If it has a market value of less than 300, disposed by individual departments at the discretion? Meaning, city manager will decide if it's under 300 or decide to let it go or like, like?
Yeah, so in our, in our last discussion, we, we had $500 in there. There's some, there's some product that somebody could say, if it has that much value, it's still probably ought to go out to bid. Uh, and so I've dropped it down to $300. But really, the indication is that it's setting a threshold of at what point does something not hold a value enough to go through the effort, the time and effort and expense of putting it out to bid and storing it longer? And if it's under $300 of value, it's, it's most likely in the category of trash. And we would be able to say if, again, based on studied value or determined value, is it worth holding on to? If not, we'll trash it. But, um, it's just really leaving that more in the staff, the city manager's hands and deferring in a lot of ways to the, the department that's surplusing it. I don't know if that answered your question all the way, but it's just, it's setting that threshold. If it's below that, we'll just handle it administratively.
So, so the discretion is if it's above or below 300?
Right.
And back to the earlier one about the weapons and stuff on it. If we're going to put things out to auction, then we should probably make it available to everybody, okay? It's competitive, so, you know, then that way there's no questions.
So do we want to take action on this policy? At this time, as written?
There's a little bit of a conflict, if I might, between what you're indicating, Councilman Dunn, and the indication from the other side of the dais as far as.
I just said, you know, you are a cop forever and you should have first dibs. But it's, I'm, I'm easy. It's okay. It's going to be a public process. It should be available to everybody. And if it's going to be bid, then the highest bidder wins. And according, and everything's done in accordance with federal law also as far as weapons is concerned.
Right. Well, I guess also a reminder, this is not a, this is not a disposal by bid process that we've outlined. This is a disposal by minimum purchase. We're just saying this is the value, first come, first served. If you buy, if you pay it, you buy it.
As long as it's advertised, it's, however you can sell it or what you. As long as it's advertised to the general public, everybody has the opportunity. That's all I'm saying.
I just also want to highlight, if I might, a provision that was inserted here. There was some concern, uh, again, being open to the public and knowing what's going on, that the city employees would not be able to immediately snatch up something that gets put onto the website. That they're, they and their families would need to wait at least 15 days and let the public have an opportunity to, to bid on it before they pick it up.
You going to strike that, is that what you're saying?
No, I, I've inserted it into the policy now.
Oh, okay.
I just was making sure that you were aware that that was in there.
Council's wishes?
I'm going to fill my motion.
Any ready on that?
Make the motion.
Unless there's other questions.
Right. Any further discussion? Somebody want to make a motion? Do I get a second?
Yeah, second.
And all in favor? Opposed?
3-2.
All right. And then the next is discussion regarding the city's tax increment fund policy. Um, we have a proposal that was provided to us. It's something that, um, has been asked of and the city manager put proposals together, so. Oh, unless I vote? I vote in support of the policy. Would you like to speak on the, um, tax increment policy you put together?
So the, the city adopted or has, has accepted the ability to create tax increment finance areas. The, there's not a real simple way to describe what that means, but I'll try for those that are in the audience. Basically, the state allows cities to, to take a piece of property and will say that right now it has a taxable value of zero. And the state says, if you want, if the city wants to go in and put that in a special designation, then whatever get built on, whatever gets built on the property, we'll say somebody wants to build a, a new Starbucks or something on it. And it creates a new taxable value between, instead of zero, it now has a taxable value of $10,000. That $10,000 normally gets divvied out between the state, the county, the school district, and the city. But if it gets put into this special designation, the city can capture all of those funds, all the $10,000, and put it toward benefiting the rest of the, the businesses in the area or helping that business become more viable. That's the gist of this tax increment areas, okay? These, this designation. And so, you want to entertain questions from?
Is that just for commercial or is it applied to personal property as well?
Uh, just, uh, it doesn't apply to personal property, only real property. Uh, there are other, there are other programs that may pertain to personal property, but primarily of a commercial nature. Okay? So for the tax increment, the, we have two questions that the city needs to look at with regards to this program. One is, do we want to designate the parcel for this at all? And then if the answer is yes, the question is, how then do we want to use, in this scenario, the $10,000? If we, if we say that $10,000 would be really nice to help widen the road or to help, uh, put new sidewalks in or a trail corridor that would connect to the new Starbucks? Or maybe help expand a, a new sewer line or a water line, some kind of public infrastructure, then the city can say, "We'll take that $10,000 and we're going to, in a sense, go out and get a loan for $10,000. And we'll use the tax money as it comes in to pay off." get a loan for $10,000, and we'll use the tax money as it comes in to pay off the loan, or what we call a bond, okay? So that's one way that we can utilize those tax dollars. The other way is, we establish what we call a credit enhancement agreement. In these agreements, the city will negotiate with the new business, or the, the person that's expanding their business, and will say, out of that $10,000, how much of that would they need to make the business viable? Would they need, you know, $5,000 over five years to, in a sense, help their bottom line, or to make it so it's gonna survive? Or do they need the full $10,000 over how many years? Those contracts, these credit enhancement agreements get negotiated and approved by the city council. And the, I guess the question that the council asked me to look into is, what would be the criteria that we would look at to be willing to enter into these credit enhancement agreements? Right now, the, the ordinance basically says that if it's a credit enhancement agreement that's going to be less, or between five years and less, those are favorable. And if it meets the intents of the general plan, we'll entertain it. That's very broad criteria for looking at those things. Some of the questions that have come up in the past have been, if, if it's a real, if it's a retail establishment, and they're coming here because of the market area, knowing that they can probably survive because of the market, do we really want to enter into these credit enhancement agreements? In a sense, giving them additional help? Or do we wanna reserve any of those funds toward other public infrastructure projects to help the broader economics of the area? So that was, that was one major question, is do we want to look at these for retail establishments? Other questions would be, if somebody comes in saying they want a credit enhancement agreement, what specific information are we gonna wanna see from them to help us justify going into that agreement? What other factors would there be that we wanna look at? And the length of the term of the agreements? By, by state code, the longest that you can go out is 20 years. And do we want to enable these credit enhancements agreements for 20 years, or stick closely with the policy right now that says, five years or less is preferable? Do we wanna tighten that down to say it's only going to be five years, or eight years, whatever that is? And how important really is a case-by-case review in these situations? Whenever you have a case-by-case review, it's still as good to have a set criteria of, these are the things that we're gonna be looking into, these are, these might be the items that we'll be a little more flexible on. But right now, the, the book is basically wide open, which means, case by case, we can be perceived as being very arbitrary in our decision-making, which could put us in a, a bad situation down the road. So I've provided to you the, again, the, the ordinance that we already have adopted. And also, I was asked to grab what other cities around us are doing, and so, the city of Prescott has a very formal policy about credit enhancements and, and their tax increment, and so I've provided that in your packet. We could probably spend a whole work session on this, and so maybe tonight, just take this as the information that it is, and read through it, and come up with your own questions or ideas, and maybe we can create a, a work session another time and, and go through this in more detail if you'd like.
And that's why I asked to provide the new councils with a copy of this, because this is pretty informative.
Yeah, this, this document that Councilor McDaniel is referring to, this has all the current credit enhancement agreements that we've adopted in it, as well as some of the state legislation and the local legislation. That's, that's some good reading material right there.
I read through it.
Yeah, it's, it is good.
It would just help somebody support this, so they understand the whole process and not just this one little part of it. So when we do make these decisions, we're making them based on all the criteria versus just...
That's what the execution looks like.
Right, basically.
Well, and there's, and there's elements in this that I don't know that we formally adopted, but were included in there as being a policy, and so, but definitely kudos to Penny Thompson, our tax assessor, who put that package together. She, she did a great job in doing that.
Any further discussion, or?
Is this the program, TIF, that... There is a limit to what you can ask for? It's not unlimited tiffing for community, is there?
It all comes down to that, that difference of your tax base. You know, in, in the scenario I gave of going from zero to $10,000 of taxable value, you can't ask for more than the $10,000 as far as the TIF program goes.
But as you add each one of these tiffs, is there a limit that a community can keep applying for? Percentage-wise, just based on something?
There is. The state law limits how many of these we, not how many we can put in place, but the amount of, of increment that could ultimately can get captured by the city. And I'll, I'll have to get you the actual percentage.
Okay, well, that was, so, if it comes up at another discussion, could I have the numbers of where we stand with that percentage? How much more TIF we have available to us as a community?
That's a great question, and, yeah, I think we can bring that to the work session.
Is this the program that also you have to be in a certain zone within Caribou to receive TIF?
You don't have to be in a specific zone, but the, the district, I guess if you wanna consider the district a zone...
Yeah, so I, yeah, okay. What would you, what's the name of the dist, what do you call the district?
We have a couple of them, but the, the largest one that we have is the downtown district.
Downtown district.
And that, that covers more than what you would consider the historic downtown area. It covers out Bennett Street and, and a lot of other areas, and we'll, like, there's maps in this packet, but we can get you maps as well.
What's the name of the other district? Do you know? I don't need to be putting you on the spot, but do you know the name of the other district?
There's, Penny, you probably know.
Downtown district, and there was an expansion to that, but it's still just downtown. There's the RC2 district, which is like south of town, which they were looking to do infrastructure upgrades there. There's the Bouchard tip, which was out on the Nader Road. And Caribou Management Agency is part of the downtown team.
Could that also be included, the outline of it?
All, all, every single document with that is in here.
I don't need everything. I'm just, I'm just asking, can, I have just the outline, the one page, that's all I want.
We'll, we'll get you a map.
There's nothing that will be left off, but your, your other question, the total area of all development districts may not exceed 5% of the total acreage of the municipality or plantation.
Okay, now you're creating, okay, so even the zones have a limit too? The total amount of acreage in the zone? Okay, I didn't know that. Any chance Gawn Berry Farm Zone is in there? No?
Not currently, but you can create tips.
Okay, thank you.
So we agreed to do a work session later, and everyone can bring their feedback and questions to that. Are you looking at March, or?
Well, again, there's, there's been a request to bring a credit enhancement agreement back to you before April 1st, so if we could do it before March, and then have it, some action by the council in, in March, that would be good.
All right, we have discussion regarding potential purchase of 177 acres from Umpi, and this is for discussion only as well, and Umpi is considering the sale of 177 acres of land at 150 Nebraska Road. By state statute, they must offer the property to local municipality as a standing right of refusal first, first refusal. The property is 95% portlisted with direct access onto Nebraska Road. It is situated between the two mineral attraction, extraction operations, and other properties owned by the United States government at Loring.
So this, like you said, it's for discussion only. We were contacted last week by Umpi. They still have to go through a process to formalize the sale of this ground, but they do have to offer it to the city first. It's, it is out quite a ways, and I guess it's a question of the council, is it something you wanna consider picking up? They're looking at it as a, it would be good to put another 177 acres back on the tax rolls of the city, and if, if we were to pick it up, I guess that's the discussion point, is what would we do with it? Is it of interest? And just throw that out there.
Is there a price tag on it? Yeah, what do they want for it?
They haven't said anything yet about that.
The other discussion?
You got chainsaw, do you?
Somebody had a hot idea for what to do with it.
Right.
I can't, I can't think of any reason why we'd wanna...
I'd like to ask a question on that. On that Nebraska Road property, isn't there a liability if the town accepts that property? Pollution liability?
I, I don't believe at this time we have any specific information on the property, it's just been unidentified.
So you're not gonna do anything with it tonight?
We're not.
Because that area is at risk.
No, we're not.
Signed, all over the place.
I would agree, whoever bought it would wanna look into it. Whoever bought it would wanna look into it before they bought it.
Any further discussion from council on the property?
If anybody wants to.
Okay, all right. We're gonna now open it up for reports and discussion from council members, and council member Gawn has stated that he would like to speak.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
This is our second council meeting, and there's been a few issues. First of all, at the last council meeting, I asked the manager for a copy of the 2016 city audit, and, 2016 audit, and I very promptly got it, thank you very much. I also wanna thank you for tonight, for mentioning the fact that the $25,000 grant that the council voted on, at least is gonna have a plan before any money is paid. And this is the first I found out about that, tonight, that we had a plan, and that we were gonna have a plan of work shown to us before any funds were. But I wrote the following, not knowing that we had, looking for that plan of work. And, and really, I have two subjects, I apologize. The first one is, we had Ms. Bressi give a talk last council meeting on the Arustic Agency on Aging. And I wanted to express, and I wrote this down so I wouldn't go long-winded, I wanted to express how troubled I was to learn that the city of Caribou, in their 2018 budget, no longer financially supports the area agency on aging. Nor, as it turns out, financially, the Arustic County Action Program. For a small membership fee, these programs can provide a valued service for some of our most vulnerable senior citizens. In Caribou's case, to support, financially support the area agency on aging, it was reported by Ms. Bressi to cost about $4,000. And it's troubling to me that our community can't support such great organizations. Further troubles me that our community can't support our senior citizens, which are turning out to be one of our largest demographics. And I would hope that the city council would really consider... Oh, and I wanna make a side note, if I may here, the current city charter gives little authority to new city councilors on this year's expense budget. Our current expense budget was voted on last year in 2017, and as a current city counselor, I cannot add to that budget. So even though I feel strongly about these agencies, charter prevents me from making a motion, well, it really prevents any counselor from changing it at this point to increase it. And I think this is something that the council ought to look into. My second subject was, and while these services are being eliminated, the budget provided for spending of $25,000 for designing a new $8 million public safety building. This proposed building will host both the Caribou Fire and Ambulance and Caribou Police Department. At the last city council workshop, it was suggested that a community committee would be formed to educate the public on the needs of this new $8 million public safety building. And as I'm sure everyone here does, we all view $8 million to be a lot of money during these high ti, high tax burden times, and as it turns out, the slashing of social programs. I believe a group of citizens educated on the subject can develop a responsible taxpayer-funded solution. While I agree that the working space at the police department needs to be addressed, I believe that it can be accomplished more responsibly, responsibly than spending $8 million of earned, hard-earned taxpayers' money. But I need to educate myself, and the key word here is education, knowing all the facts, knowing all the options from which a decision can be made. Such as a decision as having a plan of action for this $25,000, because the motion never, in the vote, never spelled any of that out at the time we were voting. To develop a plan that goes straight to building, an $8 million building, without proper education, without the proper options, and without the proper discussion, is an example of government down control, not citizens outformed leadership. Once again, I'm very much in favor of a needs assessment group, a group that will facilitate the education, the options, and the discussion, so Caribou citizens can properly, can properly educate themselves before going to the polls and vote on such an important purchase. By city charter, you, the Caribou citizens, will have the ultimate up or down vote at the polls. You must know all the facts. Over the last two city council meetings, one was a meeting and one was a workshop, several questions have been asked about other city properties being used for possible options. 60 access highway and the Armory were mentioned. The answer was that it would cost more to use these buildings than to build an $8 million public safety building. This answer goes counter to my understanding of both construction and the needs of Caribou. I will maintain my open mind while I educate myself on this subject. So, sir, I would like to request another, something else from you? I would like to request any kind of reports, documents, that allow the answer that these buildings, including our existing fire station, have no value as possible options at addressing the issue of public safety for the citizens of our, for the citizens of Caribou. Those were answers that were given to us, and I'd like to have them clarified to the best of what we know now. Thank you very much.
Any other counselors? And then reports from officers, staff members, committees? Anyone?
We've included a lot of that in your packet from the different departments, so if you, again, if you have questions about that, feel free to get back to me, and we'll get you answers as best we can.
Can you move to executive in the next round? Sue Phil.
Did you say the next meeting, March?
Oh, the next meeting is scheduled for March 12th, 6:00 p.m., right here.
Okay, make a motion to move to executive session under main revised statutes, Title 1, Section 405, 6A, for personnel matters.
All in favor? And the meeting is adjourned at 6:50, thank you.